All right, I'll pick this. Ready? Okay. Yeah. Hey. I'll be here, sir.
Is it four?
Wait a minute, I think I just seen him come by.
We good?
Okay. You got it, yeah. Yeah, there he goes. Hey, Kevin.
Hey, sir.
Guys missed the show, eh? That's Brad thing. Good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Time is seven o'clock. Welcome to the February meeting of the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission. Ms. Raggedale, would you call, roll please.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Shelton.
Here.
Ms. Meese. Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Ms. Henderson. Mr. Harker.
Here.
Please stand and join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anyone here tonight to address this board about any matter that is not on the agenda tonight? All right. The floor is open for an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks, thank you gentlemen. Motion carries, five in favor, zero against. Floor is now open for approval of the amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Second by Mrs. Brown? Please cast your vote. Motion to approve the minutes passes, five yes, zero no. Chairman's report, I just wanted to thank you guys again for hanging in there last month, that was a marathon meeting. It's not always easy to sit and listen to folks speak their mind, and I appreciate everyone's patience. I think it was a fairly clean meeting, and I really appreciate your work on last month's cases. It was not, wasn't what we consider fun, but it was definitely necessary, and thank you all for doing that. Also, if you would, keep Mrs. Meese in your prayers. She had taken a fall and is recovering, so please, as you go to the Lord in prayer, remember Mrs. Meese for speedy recovery for that. At 7:04, case R-25-005 is open for public hearing. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the planning commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance, and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we're charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board tonight regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. Case R-25-005 is now open for public hearing, Mrs. Raggedale.
Case R-25-005, Kelly Krogman and Kenneth Krogman have petitioned to rezone 10.733 acres located on State Road 921, Martin Road, in the Callens-Gretner election district, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural uses on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Kelly Krogman is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Krogman, do you have anything you'd like to say or add to what we already have in our packet?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone signed up to speak to this case?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Four against, okay. 7:06, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Webb.
In the case of R-25-005, I make a motion that we recommend the Board of Supervisors approve the rezoning from R1 to A1.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Webb to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Please cast your vote. Motion carries, five yes, zero no. At 7:07, case R-25-006 is now open for public hearing, Mrs. Raggedale.
Case R-25-006, Robert and Elizabeth Yates have petitioned to rezone 3.30 acres located on State Road 751, Grassland Drive, in the Callens-Gretner election district, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Robert Yates could not be here to represent the petition, but I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Raggedale in this case? Anyone else here tonight to speak to this case? All right. 7:08, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Webb.
In the case of R-25-006, I make a motion that we recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors to rezone from R1 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Webb to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Please cast your vote. Motion passes, five in favor, zero against. At 7:09, case R-25-007 is now open for public hearing, Mrs. Raggedale.
Case R-25-007, East Bowls LLC has petitioned to rezone three parcels totaling 28.27 acres located on US Highway 29 in the Chadon-Blair's election district, from M1 Industrial District, Light Industry, and RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District, to M1 Industrial District, Light Industry, to allow for a convenience store and gas station to be constructed on the property. Once the property is rezoned to M1, all uses listed under Section 35-383 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Ryan Gatewood is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, Mr. Gatewood.
Good evening. Thank y'all for hearing us tonight. My name's Ryan Gatewood, I'm a civil engineer, president of LE&amp;D Professionals in Danville, and I'm representing East Bowls LLC. We've got a petition to rezone the property. We met with Emily and discussed the project, and we characterize this as a cleanup zoning. This got, this, there's three properties, one's a larger tract, it's got a double zoning listed on it right now, so we're sort of cleaning this up, removing that residential zoning. There's two smaller properties that are, I believe they're former house lots, they're going to be rezoned to that M1 to match everything, and then ultimately, this entire piece will be combined into one parcel for a future commercial, we call it a mixed-use development. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this project.
Any questions for Mr. Gatewood? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Gatewood. Anyone else signed up to speak to this case?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in the...
Go ahead.
In the case R-25-007, I make a motion that we recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors to rezone the three parcels from M1, it looks like, to, to M1 industrial, some of them mixed, but M1 Industrial District and Light Industry to allow for a convenience store.
Okay. Motion for approval by Mr. Shelton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb.
Still waiting, Mr. Brown?
Yes, mind it, I don't see mine coming up.
Motion carries, four in favor, one against. At 7:12, case R-25-008 is now open for public hearing.
Case, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Case R-25-008, Robert Yaman, contract purchaser, has petitioned to rezone 2.81 acres located on State Road 873 River Ridge Road, in the Westover election district, from RMF Residential Multi-Family District to RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District, to allow for the placement of a single-family dwelling on the property. Once the property is rezoned to RC1, all uses listed under Section 35-267 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Robert Yaman is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Yaman, did you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, all right. Anyone signed up to speak to this case?
We do not have anyone signed up.
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mrs. Raggedale? All right. At 7:13, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Webb.
In case R-25-008, I make a motion that we recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors to rezone from RC1 Combined District, well, from multi-families, from RMF to RC1. My apologies for that.
Sorry.
So I make a recommendation for approval.
All right, motion for approval by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Please cast your vote. Motion carries, five, five yes, zero no. At 7:14, case R-25-009 is now open for public hearing.
Case R-25-009, Jennifer Hooks has petitioned to rezone 19.67 acres located on State Road 677 Whitefall Road, in the Banister election district, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to allow for the placement of an accessory structure on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Jennifer Hooks is not here to represent the petition, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions for Mrs. Raggedale? All right, is there anyone signed up to speak to this?
We do, we have a Timmy White.
Okay, Mr. White?
Yes.
Come on down if you would, sir, to the microphone, so we can, we can all hear you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Exactly, what is A1 zoning? You said from residential to agriculture, is she planning to do farmland, or what?
All the uses listed under agriculture, A1 zoning would be permissible. Mrs. Raggedale, if you want to run through kind of a quick, quick list of that.
So, it is a pretty extensive list, I'll be happy to provide that to you if you would like to see it, but mostly, anything agricultural-related would be allowed on this property at that point. Her biggest concern is that she would like to store equipment on the property, to maintain the property right now, and accessory structures are not allowed on a residential property without a dwelling, they're allowed as accessory use. So, this property is currently vacant, so she would not be allowed to put any type of shed or storage building on the property to house, you know, equipment to maintain the property without first building a dwelling, unless it's rezoned to A1.
Okay, in other words, she want right-ofway to it, because I believe it's right behind the 19 acres, it's behind my one acre.
That's correct. I don't know exactly what their long-term plans are as far as agriculture right now, they have some tractors and things that they would like to store on the property, so that they can, you know, cut the grass, they can bush hog it, they can maintain the property. They live two hours away, so they don't want to have to keep transporting equipment and tools back and forth to the property, but they don't have immediate plans to build a house.
Okay, that explains it.
The parcel, hold on a second, the parcel in question fronts the Whitefall Road, is that?
Right.
You front Whitefall Road.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned a right-ofway, there's, there's no right-ofway here, it has State Road frontage.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, because I know I'm on the front part, that 19 acres has been behind me and my sister.
GIS might have this, have this line in the wrong place, but it looks like that property fronts the State Road, is that correct?
Not exactly, I think it comes close to touching the State Road, but I'm not, I think it is landlocked. But it does come, it does run behind quite a few properties.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure where his property is in relation, but it does run behind.
It would not affect a right-ofway issue, if that's your concern. Now, things that are allowed in A1, grazing, I don't know how much grazing you're going to do on 16 or 19 acres, but you could do some.
Okay. Yeah, ask me a question, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. White. At 7:19, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take Ms. Henderson's case. In case R-25-009, I make a recommendation for approval to the Board of Supervisors for the rezoning.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb. Any further discussion on this one? Okay. Motion passes, five in favor, zero against. At 7:19, case S-25-004 is now open for public hearing.
Case S-25-004, Princess Rodriguez has petitioned for a special use permit on .66 acres located on State Road 57, Halifax Road, in the Banister election district, to allow for the placement of a single-wide manufactured home in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-223. The staff's summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Princess Rodriguez is here to represent the petition.
Princess Rodriguez? You don't have anything else to add, okay. Anyone else here to speak to this case tonight?
We do not have anyone signed up.
All right. At 7:20, public hearing is closed. Floor is open for a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, in case S-25-004, I make a motion that we approve for the special use permit for a manufactured mobile home.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb. Motion carries, five in favor, zero against. 7:21, case S-25-005 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Raggedale.
Case S-25-005, Ronnie and Anna Warren have petitioned for a special use permit on 2.91 acres located on State Road 622 Cascade Road, in the Huntsville election district, to allow for the sale, service, and repair of automobiles, trucks, recreational vehicles, and motorcycles, specifically a diesel mechanic shop, in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-179. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Ronnie Warren is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Warren? Do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone signed up to speak to this case?
We do not have anyone signed up.
I'd like to speak, if I could, ask...
I'll, I'll let you do that before you're...
Okay.
Yep.
Staff has recommended some conditions, are you familiar with them? One of them is, all work has to be done inside an enclosed building. Chapter nine has to do with keeping cars on the property that are inoperable, or disposal of them, and the area has to be fenced in where you keep these vehicles, are you familiar with that? And I would also like to put in there, some people get lax with putting their fences up, I would like to have a deadline for completion of December the 31st of 2025, is that satisfactory with you? Yes, sir.
Mr. Warren, would you mind coming down and speaking into the microphone, so we can make sure we get everything right?
As far as putting a fence up in an enclosed area where you keep your vehicles to be worked on, vehicles that are not running, I would like to have a completion date of December the 31st, 2025.
See, our plan is to work on diesels, trucks only.
Yes, sir.
You know, so...
But, but in the code, you have to have a screened-in area to keep these vehicles that are going to work on or inoperable.
Do any, any certain size?
It has to be a minimum of six feet tall, and screened.
But what I'm saying, then...
Just an area large enough to house any vehicles, any, the condition would state that any inoperable vehicles would have to be stored within that enclosed area.
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
If you're familiar with these terms.
All right, so you said I got to when, December?
December 31st, 2025, that's 11 months.
Yes, yes, that's no problem.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in case S-25-005, that we approve a special use permit, subject to conditions set by staff, and put a time limit on getting a fence up, December the 31st, 2025.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by... Second by Mr. Webb, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a recommendation? Um, instead of putting a hard deadline like that, um, the planning commission could put a time limit within, you know, six months of opening or 30 days of opening. Um, I'm not sure exactly when Mr. Warren plans on opening, um, but if something were to delay him and he did not open until after December 31st, um, that condition may get a little, um, you know, tricky for staff to enforce. So if you put a condition, if you worded it that within so many months or within a certain timeframe of him opening, um, or the use commencing on the property that that fence had to be installed, that may be a cleaner, a cleaner way to, to add that condition.
Yeah, I'll change that to six months after opening.
Let's, um, okay, we have a motion and then a second. Let's, uh, let's clean this one off and then you can make a, would that be the appropriate way to...
The motion can be amended at this point even after the second.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay, I, I'd like to amend that, uh, time limit to six months after opening.
Okay. Are you still a second?
I'm still there.
After the minute, all right, good to go. All right, please cast your vote. Motion passes, five yes, zero no. 7:27, case S-25-006 is now open for public hearing, Mrs. Ragdell.
Case S-25-006, Isaiah Clark LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on 20, 29.75 acres located on State Road 815 Gap Road in the Callens Grattan election district to allow for a private recreational facility and event venue in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-179. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Danielle Dalton is here to represent the petition.
Good evening. If you, if you would state your name again.
Of course, yeah. Um, so my name is Danielle Dalton and this is my husband, Brian Bivins. Um, we're actually the owners of Isaiah Clark LLC, um, which is named after our kids. Um, so, uh, we just kind of prepared just some remarks just so you could kind of get to know us and just know kind of more about what it is that we're doing. So my name is Danielle Dalton. Um, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Uh, I grew up just down the road, um, in Martinsville, Virginia. Um, I graduated from Avery University and then after spending 15 years as a business and IT consultant across various industries, I'm thrilled to be back in South Side, Virginia, um, to pursue a passion that's deeply personal to me, grape growing and with, and with making wine. Um, together with my husband, Brian, um, we're building Bivins Family Vineyards, um, a business rooted in the commu, in the community, um, for healing and for growth. We're proud to bring this project to Pennsylvania County, um, as a place that we chose, um, to establish kind of a legacy for us and our kiddos. Um, and I'll let my husband, Brian, introduce himself.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Bivins and, um, I am a retired Coast Guard veteran with 21 years of service. After retiring, I dedicated myself to helping fellow veterans navigate the process of, uh, getting their VA benefits with my small business as a, and it also allowed me to get back to my community. In addition to that work, Danielle and I decided to pursue another shared passion in winemaking. We recently, uh, purchased this 30 acres, uh, with already, uh, four acres of planted vines. Uh, it was already a operating business, uh, with the previous owner growing and selling grapes, uh, locally. And, uh, we're excited to, uh, continue that tradition under Bivins Family Vineyard. Uh, in the first couple of years, we'll follow the vineyard's existing, uh, business model by growing and selling grapes, uh, while Danielle continues her winemaking studies. And at the same time, we'd love to open, uh, property as a venue for, uh, weddings and outdoor yoga, creating a peaceful space where people can gather and connect with nature. As a disabled veteran myself, I personally experienced how working in the vineyard, uh, provides mental clarity and purpose. Because of that, we want to incorporate an already established VA approved farming program into our operations. This will give other disabled veterans the chance to work in agriculture and experience the same benefits.
So as we move forward in our plans for the vineyard, we're excited about the project and how it actually fits broader into everything that Pennsylvania County actually already has going on with the Visi, Visit Sosi marketing initiative. Um, I think it's doing a great job actually being, um, able to be a part of other major areas within the country. I think that you guys are doing a great job with that of promoting growth and tourism. And we believe that the vineyard will complement that effort, um, by creating potentially a new destination that visitors and residents, um, may want to visit alike. Um, we're here tonight just to be proactive. We know that it's going to take a while for us to actually build up the things that we need to build up at the vineyard, but we wanted to make sure that the property was properly zoned for all the activities that we have planned. And our goal is to build something special, not just a business, but a space that brings people together and contributes to the community that we love. So thank you for listening to us and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, Mr. Bivins, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Webb?
Since, uh, Ms. Henderson's not here this evening, I just wanted to check to make certain. Staff has recommended six conditions, uh, on their recommendation for approval. Are you aware of all six? Do you have any issues with any of the six conditions?
We're not aware of the six conditions, no.
Okay. Any outdoor events or outdoor music must end by 10:00 PM?
Okay.
Monday through Thursday and by midnight Friday through Sunday.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, if alcohol is consumed on-site, must remain in compliance with all applicable alcohol and beverage laws.
Okay.
Third, all structures used for events shall comply with Virginia statewide fire prevention code and uniform statewide building code.
Okay.
Four, required parking shall be provided on-site.
Yep.
Five, all events shall comply with Pennsylvania County noise ordinance.
Okay.
And number six, shall comply with all applicable Virginia Department of Health regulations.
Makes sense.
Okay, just want to make sure you're...
Yeah.
You know, we, we make an approval or a recommendation or approval or whatever for this thing, you got to live by those six, six items.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we wouldn't be able to operate without that, so makes sense.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for... All right, thank y'all. We have somebody signed up to speak to this.
We do.
Okay. You guys, uh, if you want to take a seat, and I think there was, uh, several people that wanted to speak to this case. And then if you want to come back and answer any of their concerns, we'll give you opportunity to do that, okay?
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Jerry Haymore.
Hi, nice to be here this evening. Um, I'm here because I live right beside that property. Um, I've lived there for 18 years, it's been in my family since, uh, late 1980, well, eight, the eighties. And, um, we love living there because it's quiet, it's peaceful, and we have family events at our home and we're very quiet when we're doing that ourselves. We don't have that many neighbors right on top of us and we're all real close neighbors there with each other. Um, my concern is, one, the noise, because we like to sit out on our back porch or at our pool and everything on that hillside comes to our house. Um, when people are over there working, they got music playing over there already, it echoes right off of our house. But I like where I live because it's peaceful and it's quiet. Our road is a narrow road out there in the country. I'm sure you're all very familiar with our, um, roads. It's not going to house all that extra traffic. We're not there for tourism, we're there for peace and quiet. So I do express my concerns for this. Um, we do have livestock out that way that we all take care of and watch over for our neighbors, so we're concerned for that also. I hope y'all will take a lot of this into consideration when you live somewhere and you are there for the peace and quiet.
All right, thank you.
Wesley Jones.
Okay, all right.
Roger Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as fellow board members have allowed us to speak. I own the 400 acres across the road. Uh, we're permitted by the State of Virginia. We spread manure, we plant corn, we spray, we wean calves. I don't think much of an event menu, of, of event facilities will work very well across the road. For the folks who bought it, they probably should have come to see us first to find out what we do, what we do there. I have a letter that my attorney wrote to the previous owner, if y'all would like to read it. We had issues with, with him. I don't have a problem with the venue, vineyard, but I think the, the event issues was the problems will come in there, but if I can...
If you would hand that to Mrs. Ragdell, Mr. Jefferson, then she can pass it around.
After, after the previous owner got that and he put it up for sale and these nice folks bought it, but, uh, if there's any questions I can answer for you, I'd be happy to do so.
Did you, I have just one question, did you have any, your concerns, other than you don't think it's a, a good spot for a venue, did you have any other...
Well, I, I questioned if, if you want to have a venue across the road from somebody that spread manure a whole bunch of days of the year and we were running big equipment. That's been a dairy farm or beef farm since the 50s and so that usage hasn't changed. Uh, the, the Marvin Jefferson, it was no kin to me, but he sent me a letter, so I just engaged my attorney to send him one since I think the, the way the law reads, if we were there first, he couldn't dictate to us what we could do and not do. And we're permitted, uh, our nutrient management plan is written by DCR, that's Department of Conservation and Recreation, and we are, uh, audited or reviewed by DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, every year, so...
All right, any, any questions for Mr. Jefferson? All right, thank you, sir.
All right. Have more questions?
Thank you.
Patrick Haymore.
Thank y'all for hearing us out on this tonight, appreciate it a lot. Uh, what my concerns are about having the venue in this location, my sister brought it up, was the, uh, traffic that will be on this road. As you're approaching, coming in off of 41, you would either have to take West Lee Creek Road, which is a gravel road, it is not maintained very well and stuff like that, it's very passable. You know, two vehicles meet on this road and then having one have to get in a ditch or anything like that. If you come off a gap road off of, uh, Union Hall School Road, it's also the same way, it's a gravel road and it's not very well maintained throughout the year. The only option they would have would be go all the way around 57 and come in that way, which is going to run on back into the gap road where it's not very wide either. Um, with the venues and the wedding and stuff like that going on, the increased traffic out there, you got to think about that. That's public safety when you have that coming in. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Bennett Fulper.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Bennett Fulper from the Callens Grattan District, uh, manages the dairy and beef operation Mr. Jefferson just spoke about a few minutes ago. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. This proposal, we feel has the opportunity to directly impact our farming operation. Uh, first, I want to make sure, sure that, you know, everyone here knows we fully support individuals' rights to use their property as they see fit. Also believe in being a good neighbor and we certainly welcome any discussions on how we can coexist successfully. However, I do have concerns about potential conflicts down the road. Farming is not quite a quiet and odorless business. Uh, manure application is a necessary part of our nutrient management plan and while it's done responsibly and in coordination with our regulations, it does produce odors that most may find unpleasant. Weaning cattle can be noisy, calves are going to naturally bawl for their mothers, crop spraying and heavy equipment, uh, operation can happen at all hours of the day and night, depending on weather conditions and the time-sensitive nature of crop and animal production. These activities are not occasional, they're daily, year-round, which is just the realities of farming. My concern is while the current property owner may be fully aware of these realities, future guests, customers, or even new ownership down the road may not be quite as understanding. What happens when wedding party, wedding parties start filing complaints about the smell, noise, dust from farm operations? Will this lead to pressures that restrict the legally protected farming activities that we currently have? This is a real issue that's played out in other rural communities where agricultural operations have predated new developments. I would also like to reference the right-to-farm laws, which protect existing agricultural operations from nuisance complaints when they were established before the nearby new development. In many jurisdictions, these laws, these laws ensure that farmers who are following best practices cannot be forced to change those practices or operations due to any nuisance complaints from new neighbors. I ask that the board take these projections that farms have into consideration when considering this rezoning request. Ultimately, our goal is not to oppose the rezoning outright, but ensure that everyone involved is, uh, understanding the realities of the farming environment that we run so we can prevent any future conflicts from arising. Uh, certainly want to be good neighbors, hope that everyone and anyone developing this property want to do the same, which certainly sounds like they do. However, I ask the board to consider whether this type of business is truly compatible with the active agricultural operation that's happening next door. I appreciate your time, I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That was all.
I just wanted to clarify, uh, this is a special use permit, um, property's not being rezoned. Uh, Mrs. Ragdell, if you would explain to us just, uh, in general, what that means and why something zoned A1 now needs a special use permit for this activity?
So this activity gets a little tricky. So part of what they're proposing to do falls under agritourism, which is exempt from zoning regulations that are placed on the property higher than what are placed on the agricultural use. Um, so any events that they hold that are selling their products, um, have anything related to that become agritourism and therefore are permitted by right. The part of this that requires a special use permit is any events that they are proposing that is not directly related to the farming that is occurring on the property. So the fact that they have an, an active vineyard, they have an, an active agricultural use, um, if they are holding yoga and it's not directly related, that could be construed as a, um, a use that's not directly tied back to their farming operation. Um, if they are holding, um, classes for veterans or things like that and they're not actively working in the farm, they're not selling their...
working in the farm, they're not selling their products to them, there's no direct correlation between the two, that could require a special use permit. So, even if this special use permit is denied, that's not to say that they can't have events on the property. They could still, you all are probably familiar with the Home Place Vineyard, they do not have a special use permit for an event venue because their products are consumed at every event that they have. They don't have any events that are not introducing the public to their products, they're not selling their products, allowing people to buy their products. So, I do want to make that distinction, even if this is denied, it will just limit the scope of events that they can have on the property. It will not exclude them from holding events because that's protected under Virginia State Code.
So, Ms. Ragsdale, as long as their product is sold during any event, pretty much, they're going to be protected, whether it's a wedding.
Potentially, yes.
I mean, okay.
Potentially, yes.
So, by right now, they could be a wedding venue as long as they were serving their wine?
The Home Place requires that you have their product at any weddings that you have on their property, and therefore that directly ties them back to that farming operation.
And that's because the Virginia State Code protects them as an agritourism business?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's, that is a Virginia State Code, correct?
That is correct. So, that would supersede zoning. The only, the only reason that staff recommended they get the special use permit was to cover them in case they wanted to have any events where they did not want to provide their product, you know, for sale.
Hmm, okay. All right.
Can the applicant step back up?
Would you guys mind coming back up, the applicants? I'm sorry. Bevins, I'm sorry. Looking for the last name.
Oh, no problem.
So, I'm sure there's some questions for you all. I'll just give you a chance to maybe address your neighbors there, if there's something you'd like to clarify or...
Well, definitely, we want to be neighborly. We didn't make it to everyone, like he said, but, you know, we're, we are new to this, so we didn't come reach out, and we will do that after to make sure that we get that situated. But as far as like the noise complaints and things of that nature, we would definitely do our part to keep it down once we get to that point where we're offering weddings and yoga. But most of the things that we want to do is more so, I would say, mental health-based, especially in the beginning. And then with the weddings, we would definitely talk to our neighbors to see, maybe about scheduling, what was good for them, like we are definitely open to that.
Yeah, I guess, you, how long were you on the property?
We, five months.
Five months.
Five months.
So...
You hadn't made it through the first sil, or through the first manure biosolid season?
So, we were kind of there a little bit, but not really.
Okay. I think, I think most of the concerns that your neighbor expressed is it comes from a good place. I think they're, they're concerned about the reality of what the smell is and the process. You guys are okay with that? Okay. I just, I think they just wanted to bring that to your attention more than anything else, and then the, the traffic piece of it. But, you don't have to start making exceptions or proffers or anything, just, you know, by right, you could have a wedding there next month if you served your grape juice.
Sure.
Any questions for?
Mr. Chairman, could I speak, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank y'all for being here. But Mr. Jefferson made a good point that a night, if y'all want familiar with what they doing up there, I would caution you to not spend a lot of money and spend a lot of time there. It may be something that won't work out for you. When you get sprayed in Cabo New York in the hot days, you might not have many people to show up. So, I mean, it's just something to think about. I don't want to see you waste your money on something that you can't get your money back on. But if you good with it, it probably ain't going to bother him or the cows. They're going to bawl and they're going to spray up in yours, so just make sure you keep that. I would definitely think about it long and hard. I mean, I understand, you can do things now, but, you know, he made some good points there. No, definitely did, and it's definitely something that we're going to talk about tonight and taking into consideration for sure. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Yes, sir. Anybody else? Now they covered one up. All right. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you.
And 7:50, public hearing is now closed. This was Mrs. Meeks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Kind of wish I knew how Ms. Meeks felt about this before we got here tonight, but given staff's recommendation, the fact that they can really pretty much do whatever it is they want to do now with just a couple of stipulations, I would make a recommendation that in the case of S-25-006, that we recommend approval to the board's zoning appeals.
Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. At 7:52, case S-25-007 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-25-007, Kristy Schwartz has petition for a special use permit on 246.63 acres located on State Road 640, Java Road, in the Vannister Election District to allow for a private school on the property in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-179. The staff's on reason closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Kristy Schwartz is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Schwartz. Would you mind coming down, just in case we have some questions? Okay. Is anyone else signed up to speak to this at all?
We do not have any.
Okay. But just about how many kids are you planning on having?
Usually, it'd be between 15 to 25.
Okay.
It's just a one-room school, so it's not a, it's not like a public school or different floors, it's just a one-room school, so...
You already have a building, a schoolhouse built in place.
Yeah, we do. Temporary.
Okay.
It's not, it's not been, not been approved, you know, by the zoning.
Right. I got you. Okay. And the property, I'm assuming, the adalls, I mean, mostly family, mostly family that lives on the property?
It would be a community.
Yeah.
Like, the way we usually do it, if we get more than like 25 students per school, then we build another school.
Gotcha.
And we have, we go on different properties, usually on Amish property with a private school, so we can, you know, it's convenient for your other neighbors to get, come to the school, so we don't have to go too far, we travel with horse and buggy, so we like to walk to school if we can.
Gotcha. Any other questions for Ms. Schwartz? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At 7:54, public hearing is closed. Floor is open for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on case S-25-007, that we make a motion to approve for the special use permit of a school.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Webb. Motion is approved, five in favor, zero against. At 7:55, case S-25-008 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-25-008, the Washington County ND and the Franklin County Penna Home Mission Board Incorporated has petition for a special use permit on 9.84 acres located on State Road 40 East, 40, East Gretner Road in the Callens-Gretner Election District for the placement of a private school in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-179. The staff's on reason closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Elwood Martin is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Martin?
Okay. All right. Any questions? No one else signed up?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak.
7:56, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In case S-25-008, I make a motion that we recommend approval for the special use permit to the zoning board.
Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Motion carries five yes, zero against. 7:57, case S-25-009 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-25-009, Vivian Brinkley has petition for a special use permit on 1.04 acres located on State Road 622, Cascade Road, in the Tunsil Election District to allow for the placement of a double-wide manufactured home in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-223. The staff's on reason closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I do not see Vivian Brinkley here, but I will be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Any questions for Mrs. Ragsdale? All right. At 7:58, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, in case S-25-009, I make a motion that we approve a special use permit to allow double-wide manufactured home on this property.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Webb. Motion carries five yes, zero no. That concludes our zoning cases for the evening. Old business, do we have any old business, Mrs. Ragsdale?
We do not have any old business.
New business.
We do not have any new business, but we do not have a meeting next month.
We do not have a meeting.
We do not have a meeting next month.
How did we, how did we do that?
I'm not sure, but let's not question it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not.
I guess we made up for it last month.
We tripled up last month.
We did.
Anybody have anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to echo the comments that you made earlier about Ms. Meeks.
Yes.
Please keep in your thoughts and prayers, because she had to have some surgery and had a bad fall, but keep in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you, sir.
Hopefully, she's watching, like, we love you.
Yeah, I hope so. Hopefully, she'll be back by our next meeting, meaning we'll have one next month, so...
No meeting next month.
Yeah, that's right. That's great. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? All right, at 7:59, we are adjourned.